On that, so you understood that, that particular comment. Number fifteen just asks for some additional details to be added. We have added some of these details and whichever ones we haven't will be added on the next revision. Comment number sixteen is the last comment and it's the longest comment and there's been a lot of discussion with this. So Gary, if you can now my zip drive and go into the subdivision regulations eight dash three dash seven, so everyone can see this.
And could you just, you're reading point sixteen off of which document?
I'm sorry, the Town Engineer's latest review dated July eighteenth, twenty seventeen.
See, I have a review from Victor Benny, the Town Engineer dated July twenty eighth.
Okay.
Staple here. Is that, and I ask because it ended on fourteen. You have one from two weeks before that's dated, that has sixteen points?
Yeah, I get, I'm just seeing that on here. I'm just seeing that now for the first time. I haven't seen it yet. But it's mostly the same comments.
Okay.
Probably the ones that we already discussed and said they were taken care of, but we, other ones that we still are going to take care of in the next plan revision. That's probably a summary of that here.
Very well.
So on your letter, that would be number eleven on the latest letter talking about the center island.
Yes, okay, because it's a long one.
And then I just see one other additional comment on here that I'll talk about. Everything else seems to be the same. They're shorter comments because some were already taken care of with this plan set. This was a recent review that we just didn't see a copy of yet. So first of all, the cul-de-sac center island, Gary, if you could open up that subdivision rig for me. Eight dash three dash seven, I don't know the page. So in your subdivision regulations, they, they call for a center island in the cul-de-sac. The, you have a letter from the fire marshal, from the fire chief, from Victor Benny saying that they don't like the center island. There are examples in Old Lime specifically that have nice landscaped islands and they, they work there. It's really the discretion of you, of the planning commission to say yea or nay on the center island.
Yeah, I'm reading the specific language here. It says the engineering department vigorously recommends removal of the center island.
Right, correct. And it's really, really comes down to maintenance, mostly plowing. The applicant has some, some experience with plowing cul-de-sacs with center islands and so forth, and it can be done. There are a lot of cul-de-sacs specifically in the nearest town, Old Lime, that have center islands with narrow road widths, and they work. They get plowed. It works for them. So it's up, it's not that it, it won't work. The public works department in East Lime and the fire marshal does not like them for whatever exact reason. But we show on one of our plans, we actually show a ladder truck and we show the turning radius around the cul-de-sac, so we know that it could make it. The lots that are served by the end of the cul-de-sac are ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and they, they have longer driveways. They're rare lots and the houses are further from the street. They have longer driveways, so there's a lot of availability for people to park in those driveways and not on the street to be, to be a restriction there. When we were first laying out the road vertically, we came right down to the existing grade there because the thought from the beginning is, you know, forty foot island is a fairly substantial center island. If this room's twenty-five feet, it's an additional fifteen feet beyond the width of this room, so it's a substantial circle. And within that, staying at the grade, so we're not filling a lot or cutting a lot, our thought was to whatever existing trees that are in there that are in good, healthy, growing condition that we can salvage and then supplement with other landscape. So your section eight dash three dash seven, Gary, talks about dead-end streets. And it starts off by saying they shall terminate in a circle not less than fifty feet in radius to the outside of the right-of-way. We actually have, it says not less than, we actually have sixty feet to the right-of-way line from the center. And then of which not less than forty feet in radius shall be constructed and surfaced. So we have, I believe it's fifty feet from the center point out, and then a ten-foot right-of-way beyond that. And then in the center of that island, or the center of the cul-de-sac, we do have a forty-foot diameter landscaped island consistent with this, with this section. So it goes on to say, permanent dead-end streets shall include an island centered in the turnaround, provided that such island does not constitute a lot and provided that it is left in a naturally vegetated state or improved with landscaping to be maintained by our homeowners association. The applicant has no problem with having the homeowners associa, even though it's within the town right-of-way, them having maybe an easement or whatever is required over the circle to maintain it. But we do meet this regulation currently. Would be landscaped. It is not a lot, and it's a cen, center island that meets those dimensional requirements. Then if you go down to eight dash three dash nine, Gary. Eight dash three dash nine talks about the turnaround, and it says the turnaround portion of a permanent dead-end street having a center island shall be designed for one-way traffic with a travel surface twenty feet in width. So we currently have thirty feet in width of pavement beyond that. So twenty feet, it says one-way, twenty feet. We certainly could sign it right at the beginning of the island for one-way traffic, and we could redo, you know, reduce that pavement down to twenty feet. We really need a determination from, from you as a board on which way, because it is a regulation that you have. It shall be required, and Public Works is saying they vigorously don't want it. So it's a decision that you'll have to make, and whatever decision you make, we will include that in our next revision, plan revision, because it is part of your regulation. And we certainly can modify it to be consistent with eight dash three dash nine, to be twenty feet in width of pavement rather than the thirty that we show now. So that, on my letter, that was the last comment. I did notice one additional comma in the letter that I was just handed, so I'll just go over that one quick. And I guess that's, we talked about thirteen and fourteen. So on, on number twelve, so on number twelve, I have to look up the sheet number, but if you look at the survey sheets, and this won't be on the plans up there because this was a revision. If you look at the survey sheets, I'll find you the exact number in a second. You'll see in lots ten and eleven, there was a strip down. It used to be an easement that went to the drainage basin on lot ten. And we had some discussion with others and this board, and it was recommended that that's not part of the lot, that it's on its own parcel maintained by the homeowners association, including the strip that goes out to the street. So on the surveyor's map, that's included and shown as a fee strip that didn't make it to the site plan. The site plan shows it still as an easement. So that's why Victor is saying that there's a conflict. That conflict will be easily cleared by just being, making the site plan consistent with the survey map and showing a fee strip down through to that, to that parcel belonging to the homeowners association. So there's no, there will be no easement over that. Adding that, that portion of lot ten as a homeowners association parcel and those two strips of land, and then also where the emergency access is at the beginning of the street, the emergency access was part of the open space before, and there was an easement in favor of the homeowners association to maintain that emergency access road. Per some comments, that was taken out of the open space, and it is now a fee parcel of the homeowners association with no easement now for the homeowners association because they would own it. So that reduced the open space some, but we're still at, I believe the percentage is seventy point five percent. So still, still way over the thirty percent required. And last time we showed you an exhibit, how the open space would be contiguous with other open space to the north that has a strip out to Spring Rock Road, so it would make it continuous all the way down to the ponded section of Four Mile River, all the way out from Spring Rock Road. Your regulations do allow bonus lots for open spa, additional open space, and without getting into the exact numbers, there's a minimum of two and a maximum of five bonus lots that would be allowed per your regulations, but those lots are not being requested. That would bring it to twenty-seven to thirty. Those are not being requested. We have twenty-five, which is consistent with the yield plan of the conventional subdivision layout per your regulations that we shared with you last time. That yielded twenty-five lots, and the applicant is staying at twenty-five lots and not asking for the additional two to five lots. And the last thing I just wanted to mention-
Where are those two lots?
They're, they're not anywhere. We have twenty-five lots-
Oh, you're just-
-that are consistent with the yield plan. Your regulations allow us to have bonus lots because of all the additional open space. I don't know the exact section. But we're not taking advantage of that. We're not adding even one additional lot. We have the twenty-five per the yield plan. Within the open space where one hundred percent of the wetlands is preserved in perpetuity, within the open space, there's a little bit on a couple of the lots, point oh-six percent, I believe, and that's covered in conservation easement. The last thing I wanted to mention was the development, and there's been a lot of discussion on this, too. What the applicant is proposing is to divide the property into twenty-five lots and the open space parcels, construct the roadway, the utilities, the infrastructure, the drainage basins, and so forth. And then over time, the lots will sell. This applicant isn't proposing to build out the houses. He's proposing to sell the lots. And once the lots get sold over a period of a few years, they might, they'll choose a lot, they'll build a house, they will prepare a site plan and, and put it into Gary's office for review. If, that has upland review area, clearing or grading, that most likely will go back to the wetlands commission for an individual wetlands permit. So you're not, you're not approving the house construction and the development of those. There's no, there's notes all over the plans that say no individual site development is proposed as part of this application. It's simply the roadway, the public infrastructure, and dividing the, the land up into twenty-five building lots. So I just wanted to make that clear again. The lot development is for the future. The infrastructure development in the subdivision is for now, and the road would be built. Per approvals, the, the road would be built this fall before the meeting. With that, if you have any questions for me, I could answer them, and then the traffic engineer and the archaeologist would like to share, you asked for them to be present at this meeting, so they would like to share their information.
Thank you, Mr. Ren. Commission members, based on his comments, do we have any follow-up questions at this time?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead, Rita.
I'm making this comment really because I live on a thirty-foot wide road with construction that has been going on now for twelve years and another maybe five or six years, if at best will be completed, maybe. I know what it lives, I know what it feels like to live with trucks and construction trucks and containers regarding everything that has to come out of that area to clear, to make all your lots marked. I think twenty-four feet is to me very unreasonable. I think putting curbs on the road and then having a smaller venue in the middle. I noticed that his plans changed from three to bedrooms and three or four bedrooms now to all four bedrooms. That's on the plan. Last time-
They were number three, they were always four.
Well, it was stated, it would be either three or four bedrooms.
Well, that's what people might choose to build, but we show they're suitable for four bedrooms.
So now I'm just seeing all four bedrooms. That means to me that you're having at the minimum of two children per household. That's a minimum. You take a family with three children and you go on a bicycle with these kids, and you go on a walkway, and you go on a sidewalk, and you have construction trucks coming in either direction with these children on a sidewalk with a bicycle. You know the first child is going to be further away from the parent than the second and the third child. That, to me, is a very dangerous issue. The cul-de-sac, mountain, fountain, whatever it is that you want to call it, I said the last time that we were at the meeting, there was always issues with cul-de-sacs, clearing the snow, school buses, turnarounds. You seem to make the turnaround pretty good and wide enough, but putting a stanchion in the center of the cul-de-sac, useless.
There's no stanchion, it's just vegetation.
Well, you're putting a circle, you're putting something in the middle of a cul-de-sac you're gonna have to clear around, is what you're saying.
That's your subdivision regulation. We were just setting forth, what was this, included in your regulations?
It is there. I mean, if the regulations-
Louder, please.
Regulations do require the center island, so I would advise the commission to require the center island despite the-
The comments from?
Town staff. I understand them, and I think that we can have that discussion with town staff, various departments, possibly revise the regulations at a future date. But as it pertains to this application, because it came in under the regulations that are currently in effect, that's what we have to work with. So my, my advice to the commission would be to require the center island because of further regulations. They have not asked for a waiver of that island, so.
A waiver of that regulation for the island.
To eliminate the island, so.
But then why would it be stated so emphatically? From the, from the commission here, from the, from zoning and planning and-
From the various departments.
Yeah, from the departments.
Maybe in hopes that we approve the plan without it.
There you go.
I'm not saying couldn't approve the plan without it. I'm just recommending that per the regulations which require it.
But we've had, in the past, have trouble with, with cul-de-sacs.
I agree.
You know that.
And I would say that it's Public Works that have the issue in particular, as well as the fire departments with cul-de-sacs and having to navigate around it. So that I just-
The applicant will, the applicant will do whatever the commission desires. It's in your regulation where, where between a rock and a hard place, your, your regulation requires it. We feel that it looks better. It's twelve hundred square feet of pervious area.
I was just given a very nice comment by the owner of the property who said, we'll do whatever we want. We want thirty-foot wide streets. That's what we want. There you go.
I said, we're a cul-de-sac.
No, we said, you said, we'll do whatever you want. You just said that.
I'm discussing-
The context was with respect to the cul-de-sac, and we are in a position where the regulations mandate that there be a circle in the middle, and we have a comment from the town hall, Public Works, that says we'd prefer not to flower around it.
Right.
So we, the planning commission, during deliberations, we can revisit this.
Yes.
Would your application be opposed to asking for the waiver just to tighten up the-
I, I, so the applicant come, they can't ask for a waiver at this point in the game. We've already published a legal ad indicating the specific section of which they're asking a waiver from.
Very well.
So that would basically be a whole new application, in my opinion. So maybe they could come back and request a modification at a later date, but planned before you. I mean, you could modify the approval to eliminate the cul-de-sac island. But again, I would just advise against it because the regulations require, should on an appeal, not that I would think anybody's gonna appeal on that particular issue whether it's a center island or not, but nonetheless, it's, it's an issue. So knowing that it's an issue, I always suggest is follow our regulations because we don't get in trouble.
The other, the other point I want to make is you adopted CDD regulations for a reason, and that reason is to have smaller lots, less impervious area, more contiguous open space areas and so forth. If, and we have the DEP water quality manual, if you want to see those sections. But in the DEP water quality manual, they, they also recommend reducing road widths to reduce impervious area. They show alternative cul-de-sac designs that have a center island in them. So with the regulations that we have in front of us, the DEP water quality manual and your subdivision regulations, and in this case your, your zoning regulations, we feel that we are consistent with those regulations, and that's what we're, we're trying to do. If you have, if you have a thirty-foot wide road and this, it's a dead-end street, first of all, it's not a through street. There are no parking signs on one side of the road. If all the lots aren't going to be built at the same time. So yeah, there might be one or two or three lots being, being built, houses being built, but not all twenty-five at the same time.
Absolutely right. And it's going to take more than the four to two and a four and a half years, as was maybe previously stated.
Right.
I have no idea what the price of these homes are going for. I mean, and I would hope to hear if there is a number that's there and in mind. I would like to hear what that number is. Only because logic states, depending on the price of the home, you can sell a three hundred thousand dollar home quicker than you can sell a four hundred thousand dollar home. I mean, we are coming out of the recession, there's no question about it. But four hundred thousand for young families is, it's a chunk of change.
Understood.
And I, I'm safety for kids.
The, the applicant could speak to that, but I, I would imagine that the home values would be consistent with the recently built homes in the neighborhood.
Right, and they're beautiful. The homes are beautiful in that area.
So the, the projected range would be in there. But, you know, you also can't, if you sell a lot to someone, you can't restrict them on the value of the house that they build there.
Right. And I would just hope that those homes that he's now going to repair, to build, would look, maybe not like the homes that are there, but have the quality that they have, to have the presence of, these are stately homes in an area that is absolutely beautiful. And I would hope that he would continue to keep all of that just right in form.
So, so as of now, one builder is not building all twenty-five houses, right?
Right.
So the way it's set up right now, what Bob's plan is that-
I know, he's selling the homes.
He could sell two or three to one builder, two or three to another builder, one to a different builder. So, but probably won't be a lot of spec houses built, maybe a couple.
But-
But they'll be custom-built, just like the other ones that were recently built.
But by the same token, building with a, a builder that, I mean, it would have to be town-approved, I'm sure. But you're not going to be able to build a gingerbread house look in, in a community that has the homes that are already there. They would have to be approved. So you would hope that the builders that do come into the area would take note.
Like I said, each one of these lots will, you'll have to prepare a site plan-
Individual, yes.
And it'll go back to the planning office.
I understand that. What she's asking is, would the homeowners association have caveats in the homeowner documents indicating the size of home that has to be built, maybe structural colors, or anything like that? I've seen that done, particularly portraits, right, this is, I think Darrell Rockwell Drive is one where they have specifics on it. If I sell a lot of something, this is what they have to do, two? Is any of that?
Yeah. That's exactly right.
Well, we're saying there isn't anything in that.
I'm sorry, say that again.
There's nothing in the homeowner documents that's going to, to specify whether the home has to be of a certain square footage, color, size.
So isn't that a little chancy? I'm just asking a question because that I don't know. Is that a chancy issue? I mean, somebody wants a hot pink house. What do I know? And there you go. Get a hot pink house. Sorry.
Any, any of the other houses that were recently built in there, or any of the existing houses that are there now, someone could paint their house pink tomorrow. There's no regulation that says you can't.
[laughing]
It's funny, but that's just the-
I have one question about the cul-de-sac, and can that be a level service, I mean, surface? Does it have to be a raised surface? In other words, to differ, to put in the center island, whatever you want to call it, can it just be, maybe that's concrete, but it's at the same level?
The way that we designed the landscaped center island is in that area, we brought the road, the road surface down or very close to the existing grade with the intent that there's not a lot of cutting and filling there. So with the intent of preserving whatever healthy trees were in that forty-foot circle as possible. If it's one, two, or three trees, you know, we have one, two, or three beautiful trees on that island, and it could be supplemented with other growth, you know, rhododendrons, laurel, you know, whatever.
Saying, maybe for the kids' sake, it could be a basketball court.
It's, and the intent of the, the center island, landscaped center island is just to have more pervious area for stormwater, and that's what-
So more like a catch basin.
Yeah, like your regulation there, eight dash three dash seven talks about, well, it's not, it's not lower than the street. We actually have a curb around it, and we have a catch basin where it all drains. It's not lower, it doesn't, it's not intended to collect water. It could be designed like that, but that would be, that would require taking out all the trees and regrading that particular area. So you have a grass island with, with some small landscaping in there for a while before that becomes mature. The intent here was to try to save some of the mature trees within that forty-foot island, whether it's one or three, just to have that mature growth and then supplement it with newer growth.
I'm agreeing. I think that looks great. I'm just trying to figure out a way around the fire department and the other departments who are object to it.
Yeah, we, we feel that it's attractive as well. But again, regarding the cul-de-sac center island, you know, we were asking to hear from you because it is your regulation. So-
Gotcha.
How do, how would you like us to proceed with that?
We don't have to answer that now. That'll just be-
No.
This is one of the topics that we're gonna-
Exactly, yes.
Are there further questions from commission members from Mr. Ren? Very well, I just want the applicant's team to be aware, around eight-thirty, we take a comfort break, so you've got about ten minutes if you would like to plan your comments.
I just need to add a few items for the-
What's that?
Exhibits CC, a letter from the county commissioner, and I have a fire chief. DD, an email from Zee Davies from URT. Exhibit ET, a letter from the county commissioner from David McGaw, Director of Public Works, regarding cul-de-sac. Exhibit FP, a letter from the best plan regarding plan changes. Exhibit GG, a letter from Mrs. Lawson, July twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen. Exhibit HH, a memo from the domain to the meeting, July seven, twenty-eight, seventeen. As we go tonight, II, a letter from Theodore Harris, presenting the extension of public hearing. I'll just leave a note that's addressed to Mr. Hall, the intended committee's commission. It does indicate that frequency that is in fifth, twenty-seventeen. I would, with that, just note for the commission, that might, considering the level of public comment, whether or not we may want to consider a special meeting between now and September fifth to continue the public hearing. If they're consenting to that extension, we could have additional discussion with the committee. It will be terribly late, I think, but all I have to say.
Very well.
If I might, Theodore Harris, representing the applicant as well. I'd just like to speak to the twenty-four-foot road comments. I have some both regulatory experience as well as personal experience with these twenty-four-foot roads. You should know that the standard road, if you will, for two-way, two-way traffic under the zoning commission, section twenty-four, their site plan regulations, is actually twenty-four feet. And there are a variety of residential applications that are approved through the zoning commission, of which I've had both regulatory and personal experience. The cul-de-sac we're dealing with in this subdivision is just that. It's sort of a private neighborhood. It's, it's just under two thousand linear feet long, and it represents not through traffic, but rather just individual neighborhood traffic for the homes that are constructed. It's very much analogous to the various zoning type approvals residential. Typically, they are either multifamily in a large building, or more recently, mostly townhouse-type construction. In the last two years I've been involved with, excuse me, last two to three years, I've been involved with two townhouse-type projects approved under the zoning commission, each in excess of fifty units each, and they had twenty-four-foot roads. And in fact, in one of them, they are sell, they have sold units over the last two or three years, over the last two years anyway, and continued construct and sell units while they're building. So it, it can certainly be done, and that's a much more intensive type of construction than single-family homes. I also live at Pond Cliff, which my partners and I developed some thirty years ago. That has about twenty-five hundred linear feet of road. That roadway is all twenty-four feet wide, no sidewalks. And as I said, I've lived there for the last thirty years. There have not been issues as a result of that. Here, although you have twenty-four-foot roads, because of the cape curve, curbs, rather, you actually have additional width where the concrete, the horizontal portion of the concrete of the curb exists. Plus, you have the multiple curb. It's not like the typical ones you see of Bytumus where it's a ninety-degree angle at the pavement. That's not the case here. So there, there's more effective room even in a twenty-four-foot road. So I assert that, that particularly in this context with a cul-de-sac, limited traffic principally neighborhood traffic, that the twenty-four-foot road is, is adequate. In fact, we've had comments from various developments that too wide a road encourages speeding. You know, it just, you feel like there's plenty of room and you're gonna go faster. The narrow road tends to- The narrow road tends to mitigate speed and tends to keep people driving slower, so. I I can, I've had this experience with twenty-four-foot roads, and I think in this context with a cul-de-sac, it's inappropriate width and frankly, it's inconsistent with the goals of the CDD and trying to both reduce impervious services and and be friendly with the environment and in the design of the subdivision.
One last, one second comment. Going to a twenty-eight-foot wide road adds nine thousand square feet of impervious area. And I I emailed this to Gary as an exhibit, but we have a picture that I'll show you because we can't get it up there. I did email it, but he doesn't have access to email, so this is a four explorer parked on the side of a twenty-four-foot wide road with no parking restriction on either side of the road. This is in old lime, but it just gives you a good example of if there's parking on one side of the street, how much room you still have available to traffic on that side. Keep in mind that this room is twenty-five feet, plus minus width.
You can ask a question, sure.
Mr. Harris, please.
Yes.
I agree with you as far as the speed on a wider road, but you're talking about a wider road and speed on roads that are already through traffic. This is a dead-end street. This is a street where families are going to want their children to play outside.
Well, that's essentially what you have in in the zoning type developments that I've described, they're all dead-end streets, they're not through streets. These are, these are individual developments where they're essentially cul-de-sacs. There may be loops involved in some cases, but essentially it's a dead end. You come in the same entrance and go out the same entrance. And again, I can point you to a couple of recent ones that are under construction as we speak.
I mean, I can understand if you're going from twenty-four to twenty-six to twenty-eight, that I I would, and on some of the plans, you do have twenty-eight. But I, again, the proponent for me for wider roads, for the amount of children and the amount of families that are coming into this location.
Again, it's limited to these, you know, typically to these homes, it's not a through road, and that's, that's a big distinction in my mind.
And that's a big, that's the, that's the biggest difference, because it's not a through street.
Well, but if it were a through street, then you typically, number one, are going to have more traffic.
That's right.
And number two, you're not going to have traffic that's all neighborhood-oriented. With a cul-de-sac, you're in a, you're in your own little neighborhood.
But you're almost contradicting yourself.
No.
That's the reason why you want the dead-end street and the wider road. If it were a through street, you know, it it's.
I would see just the opposite with a through street, you you tend to need the width because you're you're handling more volume of traffic.
I understand that.
This is, this is a very low-volume road because it's serving just these twenty-four lots.
With a lot of children.
But you would have that on on any other road as well.
Yes, I understand that.
And again, I I just point you to the zoning regulations, which which typically, in a residential context, are this type of development. They're closed developments where it's all limited in terms of of the number of units and second, the the traffic is generated typically only largely just because of the use on-site itself, just as this cul-de-sac does. And this has been in the zoning regulations for eons and there's, you know, I said, I I can go back to thirty years ago when the zoning commission was approving these twenty-four-foot roads, and it still exists in their regulations. In fact, in some special permits, it's actually specified, in others it isn't, and it defaults to the twenty-four-foot that's in the site plan regulations, so. And I, the end result is those types of closed developments that are approved through zoning all have twenty-four-foot roads and some even less.
But thirty, thirty years ago.
No, I'm talking currently.
And now, thirty years later.
Yeah, but I'm talking currently, they've approved twenty-four-foot roads in the last two years.
Yes.
Well, sounds like a good segue for our traffic engineer who's coming up shortly.
Oh, God.
It is eight-thirty, does the commission want to take a comfort break now or do another few more? Is there any?
Oh, I don't hear, I want to go home.
We'll take a comfort break, we'll reconvene in about ten minutes, right here. We'll resume with Joan. Okay, our meeting of the planning commission is back in order, we are in progress in a public hearing. I'd like to thank everyone for their continued courtesy, and I just want to remind everyone that while we are conducting the public hearing, please observe silence. If you do want to talk, you can move out into the hallway and have whatever conversation you need to. Where we left off, the applicant was about to bring up their, the rest of their team, so we'll begin with that. I'll give each of them a moment to speak. Oh, oh, sorry, where we were left, where we had left off, Joan had a question, so we're going to do a final trailing question and then bring up our next speaker, so Joan, go.
It's actually an opinion. Twenty-four-foot road concerns me. When it comes to an emergency vehicle, twenty-four feet is not going to be wide enough. Really concerns me. And according, if, correct me if I'm wrong, the houses are set back at that point. The turnaround, a hook and ladder, it's not going to make it. I'm really concerned about the twenty-four foot. That's it.
Thank you, Joan, that issue has been raised, did we just get an exhibit from the fire marshal, did we get a letter from him? I thought I just heard you tag it, so. Yes.
If you don't mind, I'd give you a little historical perspective, I was on zoning commission and regulations were written, and there was a joint planning and zoning commission subcommittee to adopt the CDD. All the issues that you talked about were discussed at length, were researched, vetted through the fire marshal, vetted through public works. They got all the feedback and the commission at the time went through both commissions, decided on twenty-four feet to reduce the excessively wide, at the time, the commission decided to reduce the excessively wide roads, to reduce pervious services was one of them. And we did go through the fire marshal with with the size of the roads. Of a lot of the town roads in town are twenty feet, so just a historical perspective, you may not like it, but that's what was decided at the time.
Well, in the winter.
And that went through, and now we're seeing a little bit of a different, let me read this, we're seeing a little bit of a different perspective from some of the town departments, but at the time, that was what was.